He is going to be our judge at the swearing in ceremony today, and we will take, I'll just pick you up.
What name is your husband?
You want me to just call, I'll just call him.
There you go, that's perfect, good idea, thank you John. Pick them one at a time and we'll get this done.
So, I'm pinch hitting tonight, Judge Geyer wanted to be here, really wanted to be here, she had a family emergency, so she had to go out of state. So, I told her I'd pinch hit for her. So, here we go, Ronald Jackson.
Right here.
I'm looking this way, okay. You're right on top.
I have to, Your Honor. I have Dr. Hopkins here. He's the one who pulled today's election.
Okay, you're gonna hold the Bible for us?
There you go, take that.
There you go. There you go. Are you prepared to take the oath?
I am, sir.
Okay, I state your name.
I, Ronald Jackson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
That's it, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Tom Hipoff? Here, there, there he is. See, I looked that way first time. Okay, there we go. Are you, are you, you're fine, you're fine. Just get, get all the kids in there, get everybody in there, all right? All right, very good. Are you prepared to take the oath?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I state your name.
I, Todd Hipoff.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much.
And he could have his, he could have his seat up here again, right?
Yep.
You can now have your seat up here, look at that.
Pick one, pick a seat, Tom.
They have vests on.
Okay, Glenn. Ayusu?
Ayusu.
Ayusu? I don't feel that, I don't feel bad that he screwed up gambarellas, so don't feel. Okay, all right, who wants to hold the Bible? You want to both, both hold it, how's that? Everybody gets a corner, how's that? All right? All right. Are you prepared to take the oath?
Yes.
Okay, I state your name.
I, Glenn Ayusu.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And then I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Good luck. You've got a seat right over here. I'll put it over here.
Thank you.
Michael Post. It isn't an easy name. Okay. Would you like to hold that for him? Okay. All right. You're prepared to take the oath?
I am.
Okay. I state your name.
I, Michael Post.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And then I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my office?
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations. Tell us that lots of them. Okay, and where's, where's his seat?
Over here, okay.
Okay, Diane Rochina? Did I say it right?
Rochina?
Rochina?
Rochina.
Rochina.
There shouldn't be an S. It's spelled correct.
Oh, okay.
That's the problem.
How if I call you Diane? How if I call you Diane?
That's also.
There we go. All right, there we go. Are you prepared to take the oath?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I state your name.
I, Diane Rochino.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And then I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Great job. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, Charles Shermer, last but not least. Is she gonna hold the Bible for us?
Are you, are you?
Okay. All right. Are you prepared to take the oath?
Yes.
I state your name.
I, Charles Shermer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And then I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Okay, congratulations, sir.
All right. Can I help, sir?
Oh, my pleasure. I get a week for it.
We validate work. So, how does that call go?
Hey, I can't, I can't make it. Can you do it up there?
Uh, yeah. So, while we're aiding everybody, for all the new board members to sign their affidavits and whatnot, the first order of business, this being the reorganization meeting, is the selection of a new president and vice president for the upcoming year. As our president is no longer a board member, me being the vice president, I'm just going to initiate the process and we'll take it from there. So, give me a second and see if we get done their signing.
I was surprised no one said, "I state your name."
All right, so as the first order of business is to elect the officers, in order to do so, policy states that we select what is known as a president pro temp. So, out of the nine board members, I need a nomination from somebody, one of the new board members to elect a president pro temp who will...
Actually, the president pro temp is from a returning board member.
Oh, okay. So, I still need a nomination from the floor to nominate one of the four remaining board members to be the president pro temp to select the...
I nominate Ron Jackson to be president pro temp.
Second. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. Can we do this as a standard AA or DA vote, or must it be a roll call?
It can just be an A or a N.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes nine to nothing. So, now, being your president pro temp for the day, we will proceed with selecting president... Thank you. Your, the president and vice president, we will do the same process we did last year. I will take nominations from president first from the floor. I will hear any nomination by the nine sitting board members for president, and what we will do is we will poll the board members one by one, yay, or to tell us who they select as president from the given nomination. So, the floor is open for a nomination for president of the new board.
I nominate John Kern.
Second to motion.
We have a nomination and a second for Mr. John Kern. Are there any other people who wish to nominate somebody other than Mr. Kern? Hearing none, we will therefore go to the vote. Any discussion? Hearing none, I believe we need a roll call vote.
Not if you only have one candidate.
Fair point, so, given that Mr. Kern is up for nomination, I am all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, Mr. Kern, congratulation on being selected president. And we continue with the nomination of the vice president. So, again, nominations from the floor for vice president for the school board for the upcoming year.
I nominate Ron Jackson, I second.
I hear a first and a second for Mr. Jackson. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I believe, is there any discussion on this motion and second? And again, hearing none, all in favor of Mr. Jackson being vice president? Aye.
Aye. Present.
Any opposed? So, given that the fact that it was eight yays and one present, please let the record so indicate, that's the correct thing. When a president is given, am I, am I correct, it's not a yay, is it?
It's not. Just considered not a vote.
But it should be logged as president?
Logged as present.
Correct. Therefore, it is eight, zero, essentially one present, so. Having constituted a board and its president and vice president, we're gonna take a five-minute recess real quick, we're gonna see if anybody wants to switch seats, we're gonna group photo, so stay close, we'll be back in about five minutes. I was pretty sure, but...
This shirt has barely any stains, this is about as nice as it can get. Pretty good, huh?
Nice to know, Chris.
Yeah. Hey Jeff, how you doing? Let him, let him get back. Hopefully, it's a, it's a no-brainer.
He didn't seem to weigh too much.
Yes, but who are we, right?
He didn't seem... And we always want it to look like we're professionals. Not, 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 not,[1522.12] Yeah, I never saw that before, but it's there. So I dutifully read it. So. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And for, just to make it even more painful, select the alternate. And for that, I talked with Mike about being an alternate, and what an alternate does is you get to go there when someone else can't.
Actually, you can go every time and eat the great food that they make?
You can. That's the secret. No. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. There's the PSBA liaison for 2022. Say it with me, everyone, Mr. Ron Jackson. I would recommend, Mr. Ron Jackson, he's been doing this for a long time, and we appreciate that. Are you still willing to serve?
Very willing, sometimes not able, but really sure, why not?
Well, I would like to continue filling in as your alternate on there, too, so I can pop in on those meetings, Mr. Jackson.
Well, you know you're willing to pop in no matter what, those are open meetings for all school board members.
Well, I was thinking of spreading the love to Glenn as an alternate, but we can fight, you can fight over that.
That's fine, he can have it.
Okay, all those in favor of Mr. Jackson and Glenn as alternate for the PSBA liaison? Say aye.
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 Hearing no, any opposed? Motion carries. So we'll say it's a little, this is some of the odd things that sometimes I've learned for six years serving on the school board, that there are weird things and strange orders that don't make sense, like doing all this committee work, which is the, one of the rare things that being the president has. So you would think that I might have known I was going to be president ahead of time. And I will say, I did not seek being the president, but I was informed even by Mr. Spear, before I knew about it, that folks felt I would be a good president, so I did start the process ahead of time, talking to people and thinking about, you know, would Brian like to continue on policy and education and things like that, so, just for full transparency, it's strange to be immediately sworn in and then poof, select people in positions without thinking about it for five seconds, so, no, I thought about it and talked to people. So, for finance, I have Mr. Shermer as a chair, and Chris and Todd, Mr. Spear and Mr. Hipoff. And I can send this out in a nice little pretty email. For facilities, Mr. Spear loves this, so I asked him to be chair, and to serve along with Mr. Ayusu and Todd, Mr. Hipoff. And on the educational committee, Brian and myself will still be members, and I asked Glenn to be the chair. And for policy, my, one of my favorites, but I stepped aside, I asked Brian to be chair, and for Mike and Ron to serve on that committee, although I will be checking for typos. And we already mentioned the upper Bucks, pardon? I already mentioned the upper Bucks and the Education Foundation, Diane has some personal family history around that very topic, so she volunteered to kind of take over, I think, these are getting into some of the committees that don't meet quite as often, the Bucks County IU, we certainly can't stop Mr. Jackson with his, you know, 18 committee reports in a row, so Ron has offered to continue to be the IU representative. We already talked about PSBA. And for the rarely meeting HR committee, I asked Ron to be chair, Mike and Diane to be members, and then there's a Quakertown area planning committee or commission, I don't know, it's probably a committee, right, Chris? I don't know what the C stands for.
It's actually a committee.
I'm going with committee, because commission sounds more formal. Chris and Mike. And that is just trying to coordinate schools and the, you know, with our community, so in downtown Quakertown, and they try to coordinate with all the different regional townships or whatever we call ourselves. So, did I miss anything? I think I got them all. And. So, now that I said that, I would like a motion to approve those ad hoc committee assignments.
So, you got?
I had a procedure question, so does that include the calendar that's associated with that?
Oh, I see, yes, it does show the various dates, so.
No, right below where it says this ends the reorganization meeting, there's the link for the proposed board and committee meeting dates. So by voting for that, we're approving that as well, or no?
It would depend.
So they were just proposed, so the chairs can, we can fiddle with the dates.
I'd say, I say we should, well, I'm going to make the motion that we approve the members as presented by Mr. Kern, along with the current list of meeting dates and times that are within the public portion of the meeting, of the agenda, just so that we have something to formally approve, meeting dates can change in the future, but there you have, well, that's my motion to approve tonight.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, thanks for asking that, Brian. Okay. Dr. Harner, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir.
Literally.
Good evening, everybody, good evening, members of the audience and those of friend from home listening on live stream. Tonight's superintendent report, we have two parts, one for our student report, from our student representative to the board, and we have our, you can tell we have our, what are you guys back there? Football, can you imagine football, is that quiet? Incredibly respectful, George, thank you, coaches, they've done well. But first off, Rebecca, please come on up, Coach Mooney. Well, we have three sports we're going to recognize this evening for their success this past fall, individual members of our cross country team and also our, and our golf teams. We have Coach Mooney here and Rebecca Hickey. Rebecca is the first member of Quakertown to ever make it to the state championships in cross country, and I wanted to. Even during COVID, we knocked it out of the park with fall sports, with historic record breaking seasons, and Rebecca is our first that we want to recognize tonight. I'm going to ask Coach Mooney to talk a little bit about cross country, the program, and how far we've come in just the last couple of years, Coach?
Good evening. I've been head coach cross country for the last four years, and I do have to say that this season has been the most rewarding for me. This being my fourth year, it was the seniors of this year, they're, they went through my program for four years, and it was nice, it was nice to see their progression. However, I can't say enough about this young lady, she was such a pleasure and such an honor to coach this season. She, for those of you that don't know, she is a junior, she had a stress fracture last year and didn't run a step, unfortunately. She came back this year with a vengeance, a take no prisoners attitude, if you will. That being said, just as an example, in our five dual meets, she placed first in four of them, and second in the other one, losing, I believe, taking second to only the Hatbrow girl. But she was far and away a leader for us. As Dr. Harner mentioned a second ago, our first girl that handled states, took us to states, and it was, it was a pleasure for both she and I, we had an opportunity to jog the course the day before, and we went over some pointers, and I think she took advantage, she definitely took advantage of it. The thing she did say to me on the way out, as she was coming through the chute, she says, I'm coming back next year, and I said, you know what, bring your teammates, so. She, we ran a couple of invitationals this year, we went to New Jersey twice, actually, ran the historic Homedale Course, known for the bowl, and it is a steep incline, down one side and up the other, and she did quite well. She, she actually medaled in every invitational that we ran, and that's top 25 or better. In our league meet, she placed fourth, behind, behind, I believe it was two Upper Dublin and Hatbrow Girl, but she was fourth at our league meet. Our district meet, she placed 33rd, she was a wild card, if you will, top six teams go, and I believe it was top 20 wild cards go. She performed outstanding at the state meet, she wasn't pleased, but she never was, we had a couple battles back and forth all season, she, being, being a junior and noticing that a lot of the freshmen, and we have a large group of freshmen coming out, and I was excited, you know, for the large numbers, and they're only going to get bigger, but she definitely led, and she was a little concerned because every time we would race, the freshmen would always PR, personal record, and she was wondering why she wasn't PR-ing at every race, and it was because, well, Rebecca, you have a history, you have a, a history. There you go, perfect, thank you. So, that being said, it was an honor to, it was an honor to coach her, and our program is only getting stronger, we look forward to the support of the board as well as our gracious superintendent here, who, I think we were the only team at the district meet to have a superintendent be there to cheer us on state for all the races, followed me from mile marker one to mile marker two to the finish line, so it was, it was incredible. I want to thank Dr. Harner for his support throughout the season, thank you.
Next, Coach Altman, come on up with Nick Joyce, Brad Gallagher, and Ty Wilkin, come on up. And as they're walking up, just something for the board and for a lot of you folks, especially parents that are in the audience or parents that are listening, when an athlete in Quakertown is in season, their academic average is up a half a grade. If they're in extracurricular activities, like if you were here earlier, we had the choir, band members marching, band, all those, they're up three quarters of a grade when they're in season, just something to think about, the value of our extracurricular activities. And, and for everybody in the audience, especially, we have a lot of guys in the back, the turf field at the high school, as George will tell you, came the decision to do that, to put turf after all the muddy field that George played on as a, as a student, and many of the other coaches back there played on as students here in Quakertown. That turf field there was, the decision is made by the board to turf it, because they have to come up with the money to build a sports complex four years ago, was made by the board and all that kind of stuff, so that's the significance of the things that are going on right here. But let's get to these guys. Okay, Nick Joyce, stand forward. Nick? A little tall. No wonder you did so well, you got a heck of a, was it fulcrum, what's that, what's that called, John?
Lot of leverage.
Leverage, yeah, lot of leverage. Nick Joyce, let me talk about his record, in 2020, he was first team all conference, suburban one conference, 2021, he was first team again, all conference, suburban conference, 2021, he finished third at the suburban one conference championships, highest finish ever for a Quakertown golfer, highest finish ever. In 2021, he finished in the top 15 at the PIAA District One Tournament, and he's the first Panther to ever qualify for the state championships, and they were in Hershey, right?
York.
York, they were in York this year, okay, in York, thank you very much, congratulations. Brayden. Mr. Gallagher, 2020, he was a second team all conference, suburban one conference, 2020, he was a finish to top 20 at suburban one conference championships, and also in 2020 qualified for the PIAA District One Championships. This year, he was the second team all conference and suburban one conference, congratulations, sir. Ty? Everybody, you gotta be six foot to be on your team. Freddie, can you play golf? Just checking. You'll learn. Ty Wilkin here, in 2021, is honorable mention for all conference team, suburban one conference, so congratulations. Coach and teacher Steve Altman, he's a teacher at the high school in special education, and he's our coach, I'd like him to talk just a minute about the golf program.
Thank you, Dr. Harner, and hello to everybody out there. It was an outstanding year for us this year, more so, not so much with accomplishments, but with the number of kids that we actually had come and participate on the team. 2019, the year before I started, we had, what, nine kids, Ty, that was your freshman year, and then last year, we had 13 kids in 2020, this year, we had 31 kids try out for the team. So it grew tremendously. The scary part for me is we had an athletic interest sign up in the auditorium a month or two ago, and we had 93 kids sign up that they had an interest in golf. Along with 14 girls signed up, we have a coed team in suburban one conference, we had two young ladies play on the team this year, and we have 14 girls showing interest going forward. So there's a lot of growth in the game going on, there's a lot of things that appeal to a lot of different people, both being outside and, and the type of places you get to go to, the old park with a purpose concept on the golf course. It's fun, and we had a lot of success here, this year, both individually, as you saw, we had two or three other kids who were right on the cusp of all conference, within a shot or two, the way they do the all conference selection is your overall handicap through the year. We set our team record for low score, we shot 200 twice, which, that was also frightening because I told them I'd buy them dinner if they shot under 200, so I was like, okay, waste of bogey on the last hole. The next year, I think I'm going to have to lower the number a little bit, but, but we have a lot of good things, we're looking at going forward, and we're really excited about that, and we've got a lot of really good kids, and, and I'm looking forward to really successful years down the road. So, thank you for your support, we appreciate it, Dr. Harner, thank you for your support. And it was also fun, by the way, when, when they were doing the district championships and everything was on Golf Genius and was being broadcast online, and both the state, that there were so many kids in the school that were actually watching the broadcast as it went through, and showing that interest, which we hadn't seen before, and I've been at the high school for 17 years, and I've never seen anything like that, so, good stuff, we're on the right track, okay, thank you very much.
I was going to ask for a golf clap, but it was too late.
Last, but definitely not least, Coach, when you bring your teammates up here and have them on the side here? One of the interesting things I've noted just this evening is how they all clean up really well. Normally I see them before the game, and they're fairly well groomed by the end of the game, you know they're not, but now they all have got their haircuts afterwards, after the season, and, yeah. Come on, line them up, George, might figure it out.
We line it up?
Great job, guys, great job.
Congratulations. I'm going to hand, I'm going to hand it off, as they're figuring it out and getting in a big huddle, like with all our other sports this season, I couldn't have been prouder, this was a historic year, 13-1 record, undefeated, regular season, first time since 1956? First time since I was born, that's a few years ago, quite a few years ago, couldn't have been prouder, the discipline on both sides of the ball was just amazing, from my little amateur eyes, but I'm going to let Coach Spanish talk about his team and talk about the season, because it was historic, and I think we owe him, him, the time, the team, the time, to talk about how these young men and young lady, who I'm also very proud of with her foot and kicking field goals, how well they've done, so Coach, it's all yours.
All right, I'll try to keep it as quick as I can, but there's a lot of accolades here, like you said, historical, 13-1 record, it's never done, been done in school history, 56, we were 9-0 and 1, and then 54, they were 12-0. So we were able to eclipse both of those records, this team, and that's where all the credit goes, it's the players on the field and their decision making, both in the offseason, leading up to this year. Last year with COVID, everything going on, we were lucky enough to play eight games, but I think we just missed hitting our stride last year, and then obviously came into our stride this year. Along with the 13-1 record, we went undefeated in our league play, winning a conference championship, we made it to semifinals against Garnet Valley, first time in school history that we've ever done that, beating both Sodderton for the second time, to win the 309 Bowl Trophy for two times in one season. In the first round of playoffs, second round of playoffs, we went down to Downey Town East, traveled extremely well as a fan base, and were able to get a win down there as well before running up against the buzzsaw of Garnet Valley. And then last Thursday, many of you were there, we were able to cap a season and make sure that we went on, out on top as winners as a senior group. 19 players have been selected as all league from this team, 19, it's a record. So, we're going to celebrate those accolades, we're going to have plenty of guys signing to go to colleges, but this team deserves so much credit, and we talked so much this year about being the standard, and that was sort of our, you know, war cry this year. is to be the standard.
And the hammer.
And the hammer, thanks to Freddie. And we were on Thursday, that's for sure. But these kids held themselves to such a high standard on and off the field, academically, behaviorally, working in the community, giving back to the community, and then on the field. And it showed last Thursday. You know, they took a lot of cheap shots and were able to compose themselves and stay in the game and come away with the, you know, the shutout win, which was very impressive. So we started the season that way and we ended the season that way. But these kids, I talked to them all year long about coming out of the pandemic and how much they meant to the community. And they don't realize it now because they're just teenagers and they're busy worrying about 100 different other things that'll get them in trouble. But when they're like 30, 40 years old, they're going to realize, you know, coming out of the pandemic, they brought Quakertown back together. On Friday nights, all right, this town forgot about everything else, all the other BS that was going on in the world. From the start in the morning when we had the band going around the school and playing music and finding me, making sure I could get a video of it, to coming out and supporting us both home and away. I mean, the community was absolutely phenomenal. I mean, there wasn't a seat left in the stands at Alumni Field. Our student section, all right, what these kids did for the high school, the community, they're going to realize later on in life that it was a turning point. And, you know, not to take anything away from the other sports programs, we had a tremendous fall this year. We really did. But I think Friday nights are different. It's just the way it is, you know. So for them to be able to have a season like they did coming out of the pandemic and just sort of reviving this town, I think is absolutely amazing. And they deserve all the credit. They deserve everything that they have coming to them. I want to thank you guys for the support. New board members, I'll give you a pass. Old board members and re-new board members, you are not allowed to wear green or red, including you, Dr. Harner.
It's Christmas.
I don't care if it's Christmas. You know better. You know better.
I might even have my snowman tie.
You know the rule. Gray, blue, white, black. That's it. All right? So new board members, you get your free pass tonight. But I just want to thank everybody again and really congratulate this group of young men. So, thank you.
Now go back and study. And what?
I said, and young lady. She knows I was including her.
Ms. Peter. You may go first. Ladies first. Now you guys go. Come on, go get your homework done. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. We can take a five-minute recess to let people leave.
So we should be done by 11?
Could have been, I had.
Apparently there's not.
Can't blame me. Okay. it's all yours, the floor. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Harner. Oh, I don't know how close I need to be to this thing. I want to say hello to the board, the parents, and anyone else attending virtually tonight. First off, I just want to thank our lovely superintendent, Dr. Harner, and Quakertown Community High School Principal, Mr. Vee over there.
Lovely. I've never been called that, so thank you very much.
The first of many.
Yeah, it's the Christmas tie, yeah. For inviting me to speak tonight, and also thank you to everyone listening. Both this and last year have been really difficult for all of us, student, teacher, and parent alike. And I feel proud and honored to say that despite all the challenges, we have succeeded in coming together as a community and overcoming these obstacles. As you were able to see from Varsity Singers' performance tonight, the music program is absolutely thriving. Before the Thanksgiving break, our high school had a pep rally that both Varsity Singers and the band got to perform at, which I think went incredibly well and certainly helped to boost morale at the high school. In terms of curriculum and teachers, my experience has also been overwhelmingly positive. The teachers, especially the math department, have been phenomenally effective in getting students back on track with the gap in learning that students are still recovering from. I want to specifically thank my AP Calculus teacher, Ms. Waddell. She's really good. Overall, the student body is improving tremendously in comparison to last year, and we are very excited as we return to normalcy. I personally am thrilled to see how this new school board will work together and what positive changes we can make as a community moving forward. It is the people in this room and attending virtually that shape the world of our students tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. What kinds of things interest you in school?
Well, I'm in Varsity Singers, so a lot of my time goes to that. I'm also in the Choir Council. So we got to go on a New York trip recently, which we didn't get to do last year, which was really exciting. We went and saw Aladdin. I did track my freshman year. That was a lot of fun. The musical, which is upcoming, I'm really excited for. And I guess you guys voted on it already, but I don't know what it is. She won't tell me, Ms. Camber. But yeah, I'm just, just a lot of things at the school that I'm really excited to get involved into this year now that things are opening up again.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so if you need to, you know, skedaddle for doing more meaningful things, that's okay.
Thank you for having me.
We won't take it personally.
You do have Varsity Singers pretty much every night for the rest of this month, so try and get your homework done.
Okay, so we can move on to the Standing Committee reports. Facilities Committee, Mr. Spear.
Actually, we did not meet between this meeting and the last meeting.
Okay. And how about the tech school?
Yes, the tech school did. The tech school did meet, and I have just a few updates here. Joanna Venezali was the student of the month. She's a senior at Pen Ridge and with the dental care program. She is radiology certified, has earned an OSHA 10 certification, and her first aid CPR certification. She's a first honors student and also a member of HOSA, Future Health Professionals. Upon graduation, Joanna attends to plan Montgomery County, or attend Montgomery County Community College for the dental hygiene program and pursue a career as an orthodontist. The JOC has been reviewing new program offerings and will be discussing an exercise science program, hopefully for the 22-23 school year. The JOC still needs some more information but looks to approve this program at the upcoming meeting later this month, so the sending districts have time to make sure they can add it to the tech school offerings for next year. The restaurant, bakery, and salon have been or will be soon open, so check out ubtech.org for their times. And that's it.
Thank you. Now for the president's report, since I've been president for so long. I just want to take this time to acknowledge there, for those that were here in the beginning, you could see there were four of us remaining from the last board, so thank you, Brian, Chris, and Mr. Jackson. And there's five happy new faces. Though, you know, I cannot say that they don't know what they're stepping into because I think they've watched and attended a lot of the board meetings over the past six months. So thanks for sticking your necks out and putting it in front of the public. So far, they don't get chopped off. But last meeting, I did give my appreciation and thanks to the outgoing board. And paraphrasing Mr. McCucci, I think he said something pretty spot-on about what it means to be up here and how never again will he doubt the selfless act of serving and how hard it is. So I appreciate Mr. McCucci's outgoing words, so. But tonight, I am honored and humbled that you selected me to be your president, board president. As I mentioned, I did not seek that, but I really appreciate that you're bestowing that privilege on me. So we all come from different walks of life with a lot of varied experiences, and I know a little bit about you, that there's various motivations for serving, and I think it'll be fascinating to the gentleman who just left. Fascinating new opportunity for us as a board. Because we are put in, I guess some might say unenviable position, but we're in charge of $120 million corporation, and that's real. Right? There's a lot of competing demands from the parents, students, taxpayers, educators, and staffs. And one of our good board friends, Mr. Tom Templeton, he always starts his, when we do these board retreats, he always reminds us that anytime you talk about kids, someone's kids and their taxes, those are very, very sensitive subjects. So we're often in the thick of things. Not to mention dealing with all the federal and state demands and everything COVID, as you even heard regarding the sports. And as an aside on the COVID, just mostly for people in the viewing audience, this summer, on August 12th, we started happily, so to speak, at least from my perspective, with voting masks mandatory. Then, not too many days later, on the 31st of August, Harrisburg decided to reverse our local decision. And if you know anything about organizations, team dynamics, well-being is often linked to autonomy. And taking away our autonomy does not bode well for people's well-being. And worse was they instilled what I would say fear in our admin over losing their jobs if their mandate was not followed. So a bunch of, I don't know how many, but Governor Wolf didn't do it because he was already not allowed to do it, so he had some other means to make this happen. So unelected bureaucrats in Harrisburg basically poisoned the waters in every school district in our state. They pitted boards against the admin, and to me, it's a travesty. So in my opinion, I hold the admin harmless in their having to toe the line to save their jobs that they were threatened with from Harrisburg. So that's just a little aside on how I think COVID affected us in the past few months. It's bad. But being chosen board president, I think it's a big challenge for me personally and one that I'm looking forward to learning and growing from. So thanks in advance if I make some foibles here and there that the public and my colleagues will pardon me. But I hope that through the pandemic, you've seen that my intentions are sincere and principled, that I attempt to gain a wide perspective on topics, seek data and logic. I'm an engineer. I can't help it. Just ask my wife. Make my case deliberate amongst us and seek consensus. So my pledge to my colleagues here tonight, I'll strive to set the stage for this board to become a truly high-performing team. Because that's, I've only had those a few times in my careers. It's a rare thing, but it's an awesome thing. I want to allow spirited and respectful discourse, seeking to understand before speaking. There's some cool things that we saw in Nighting, Stephen Covey's things. It had a little circle up there about seek to understand. You know, two ears, one mouth. And easy for me to say, hard for all of us to do. I'm not going to say I'm perfect at it either. But it's especially important when we disagree. And through it all, I think, to carry forward the board's decisions in unity. So my pledge to the admin and staff, we'll work collaboratively at setting our vision and goals in the new year. Can't wait for the retreats, which unfortunately are not in any place awesome. They're in the back room, which, sorry to spoil new board. I still remember the first time I saw a retreat. Oh, cool. We're like going to go to, you know, some conference center in the Poconos.
I was waiting for paintball.
Yeah.
A paintball team-building exercise.
Now, that would be fun. Self-funded, that would be a blast. Anyway, we'll work together and explore ways that I hope, unlocking the talents that I see in our district by creating supportive environment. Because if we can help everyone do joyous and meaningful work, that's pretty awesome in life. And ideally in the software world, there's a lot of enterprise, there's a lot of organizations that people are miserable and not doing joyous and meaningful work. So I hope we can establish something. Dr. Harner, I know you've taken a lot of heat of late, but I know where your heart is, which I appreciate. It's in the right place. I look forward to working more closely with you. And Dr. Hoffman, you know how much I cherish you and the OTL, working to ensure our curriculum is the best it can be. So if you notice, I'm still on the education committee. I wouldn't miss it for anything. And Ms. Edwards, I'm forever grateful for you being you, and I mean that from my heart. I know you love me for pushing the boundaries and rules. I have a special place in Dr. Harner's and your hearts for that. And I hope you know that I value your guidance in helping us understand where the lines should be drawn. And they're measured, and they're sometimes challenging, but you've served this district admirably for decades, and I look forward to working with you for years to come. Thank you. And my pledge to the community, all five of you, or six of you, but all of you out there, we'll continue to listen to our stakeholders, from parents with kids in the district, taxpayers, those on fixed incomes. There's a wide range that we have to support, the well-off to the poor in our community, especially those who often have no voice. Those are the ones that I feel we really need to stand up for. So we'll also, I'd like to encourage the parents to follow the chain of command because a lot of times we'll get emails to the board that I think are premature. So I hope that we can encourage folks to look first to their local teachers, their principals, you know, work it up the chain. Even though I'm not Mr. Command and Control, there is a reason for that because hopefully you can get local resolution because we don't, we're on top of $120 million corporation. We are not in your buildings, thank goodness. Right? So from my opinion, we charter the vision and goals, we set policies, we have specific fiduciary responsibilities, we hire competent admin, and leave most of that to you. It's not to say we're not involved, but we're not in the weeds, in my opinion. That's how I serve as a board member. And I want to strive to communicate clearly because a lot of times when I first joined the board, this is their world, the education world, so oftentimes there are acronyms and all kinds of things that are unclear. And in the case of many of the strange government dances that we do, I've long strived to make sure we communicate clearly so that the members of our community aren't wondering, what's PBIS, or what's SEL, or what are all these strange things they're doing? So we'll continue to strive to do that and make our presentations clear. And also show you, share with you the realities that we're facing. Because a lot of times, before I got behind the school board, so to speak, it was pretty naive about how things work.
I remember.
Yeah. It's so funny. Yeah. But anyway, we're subject to a lot of external control. You might be shocked to find out just so much. So in closing, in the past six years I've served on the board, I also want to say the biggest foe we have, or an ally, depending on your perspective, is what I feel like to call the status quo. There's this big o- There's this big other elephant sitting on top of the district, that's why Nancy Ann always has to rein me in. But status quo is tough. It prevents large swings, which is probably a good thing at times. It acts like a dampener, like a shock absorber. But status quo can also stifle innovation, and I'd love for us to figure out ways to just bend a little bit to get as much as we can out of our awesome team and see how this team of 12 can build a strong and supportive board to combat the status quo and drive our district forward. So, thank you. There ends my boring speech. Any new business from the board?
I had a few things that I just wanted to kind of recognize since the last time we met. My kids go to Trumbowersville, and I wanted to thank the coaches, parents, staff, the Trumbowersville community for putting on a Girls on the Run program over there. I had never heard of this program before this fall, and it's a program that helps build confidence in girls, I think it's in grades third through fifth, where they talk about some of the things on ways to deal with everything that's going on around them. And while they're doing that, they're training, they're meeting every week, a couple times a week, and training out in the back over there with the goal that by November, I think it was November 12th, they ran a 5K. So, every one of the, I don't know, it was about 10, 12 girls, went down to New Hope earlier this month, or well, last month now, and they ran a 5K through the streets of New Hope.
Really?
It was amazing to watch. There were kids from all over the county, and I'm not even so sure if some New Jersey schools weren't there as well, but I'd say there was about 250, 300 girls, and I wanted to thank them and recognize them, because I don't think they get a lot of recognition for that. And it was run by teachers, by the counselor over there, by some of the staff over there, and they did an amazing job.
So, Brian, my senior daughter, that was just up singing in front of us, did that when she was in third through fifth grade. So, it's a program that's been alive for a long time.
Yeah, that's what I learned.
She ran her 5K in Hopewell, New Jersey, back then. So, they do do it pretty regionally, too.
That's cool.
It was cool, and it was kind of neat to watch them run and all that over at New Hope. So, the other thing I wanted to recognize, and I know we saw some of the performers here, but I'm a huge Sherlock Holmes fan, I love those stories. So, when I saw that the high school was performing Baskerville, I said to my wife, we gotta go, I want to see this. And I was, I won't say I was shocked, because I knew they would do well, but it was such a great performance, it was such a great night. I know, Chris, your daughter was in it, and I've commented to her about how good she was, but they were all very good. I didn't know the story or the play, I knew Baskerville. But it's actually a kind of a lighthearted take on the book. They did a great performance, they all did it with English accents, which I think is amazing to me. And I will admit, we were watching the score, because that was the same night that we were playing Garnet Valley football, but.
But you could stop after a while.
Yeah, we did. So, I wanted to recognize those two things that don't always get recognized, but I wanted to let everybody know that those two things are happening and congratulate the people involved.
Mr. Reimers, thank you very much for those things. Lisa was telling me that other schools do run their program, as Chris kind of confirmed, and when it came to the Baskerville performance, the play, Andrew Kane is our teacher at the high school, he's a graduate of Quakertown, and he's back in, and he's been with us about four years now, something like four years. So, he's become our director for both the musical and the plays in the fall. So, we have an ongoing, our Performing Arts Center is constantly having a performance out there. I went to the Thursday night performance so I could go to Garnet Valley, and I thought the play was just phenomenal. Andrew's gift in getting all those players to be able to speak with a British accent and do a darn good job with it, it was amazing. And they stayed with that accent the whole time. So, thank you very much for that shout out.
Yeah. I did have one more thing, and I know Chris is kind of chomping at the bit here, but about two weeks ago, I was part of a, I forget what she calls it over at PAF, where Dr. Bradley meets with.
Coffee and conversation.
Coffee and conversation. And she expressed some concerns about some of the things that are going on there. In the two weeks or so since that meeting, and I think Mr. Isu was there as well, you know, we've heard some other things, and I had asked the administration to kind of be ready to kind of give us an update or give us a little bit of information about what's going on. So, I'm asking, can you share with us what's going on over there? And not talking about specific people, but can you let us know what's happening and how it's being addressed, so that way, we know, and, you know, because I'm getting calls and emails from parents who are saying that their kids are coming home, saying, you know, it was a good day, Mommy, I didn't get beat up or hurt at recess. So.
Well, I think, I will start off, yesterday, I took Mr. Kern and Mr. Klein through Nightig Elementary School and asked him, not knowing of the email question that you had for the board and for me, and I asked him the same question, and Mr. Kern, what'd you hear?
Yeah, it's kind of fascinating, which is why I'm a aerospace and software engineer, not an educator, that Mr. Gutschalk was talking about, I think it was PBIS, and plus how they do ADR. So, like, there's, I guess, a disciplinary report or something like that. It sounds like when something happens, they track it and they indicate kind of attributes about it, you know, was it defiance, was it, you know, certain types of things? And it sounds like they look at the trends, they talk about it, I think they even sometimes talk with the kids, actually, about it, too, what they're seeing. And so, it's not lost on the, my takeaway is, it's not lost on the administration that all those kinds of activities are being logged and tracked and then confronted and dealt with, and they put in different tactics, I guess, to deal with them. So, it sounded like they are constantly on top of that sort of thing, which was cool to hear.
Well, the reason I asked Mr. Kern to talk about it, because it's going on in every school, and every school has issues mostly from COVID. And our students at the high school, a couple months ago, we had Mr. V talking about the fights that were, like, we had a week and a half of every day having something significant going on in a bathroom.
That's why I was asking, because in my.
And so, it's every building.
What I'm hearing, this sounds like it's very similar to that in the.
At the elementary level, it's not as serious as that, but at the elementary level, which Mr. Gutschalk talked about with the two board members yesterday, that at the different building levels, there's different levels of discipline issues going, manifesting itself, mostly COVID. As he shared yesterday, a lot of our first-grade students didn't do kindergarten inside the building. They weren't socialized. So, they're extremely disrespectful in some cases, excuse me, probably too strong a word, in some cases, they are acting out because they hadn't been in a school environment and they haven't made that adjustment. So, those things are manifested at every building level. At the middle school level, it's the hallway discipline issues that go on. And then at the high school, it was lunchtime bathroom issues that were going on. So, we use PBIS to address those things, is our strategies, that data-driven modeling. As he talked to the two board members about entering into Swiss, they have their data, they have the students' inputs, they have the teachers' inputs, and they collectively come up with a model, which is exactly what you heard about at PAF from parents and from what Dr. Bradley and her team were leading in their building. So, thank you very much for the question.
Is it possible that we can get, and it doesn't have to be anything formal like this, but can you keep us updated about what's going on? Because I would like to be able to answer parents when they call or email and say, you know, what's happening with my kids, or why are they, you know, why is this happening?
I really, that's a great lead in for all the new board members. When a parent contacts you, I respectfully ask that you say to them, talk to the administrator of the building, or first start with a teacher. And then, if you're not satisfied, talk to the principal. Mr. Kern already talked about that, about the chain of command kind of thing, and solve your problem at the lowest level, not at the board level. If we have a habit of parents emailing you for solutions for a problem, and they haven't talked to the teacher, haven't talked to the administrator, haven't talked to the assistant superintendent, a member of OTL, or me, then we're approaching these issues in an incorrect manner, in my opinion. And I think every, I know every administrator looks at it that way, and that's the way we're trained to look at it. So, for the new board members, if you get those kind of emails, CC me, because I need to know that you have a concern.
And we're on those emails.
Well, let me just say, like, one of the values about not getting in the weeds with that, although I understand why you might be urged, is we can give wrong answers, we're not there, we can give inconsistent answers, and it's really, it's the people we've hired to do that is how I feel it should be done. It's not for us to get in the middle of, you know, that's why we have a staff, you know.
But my point is, not so much the people that are emailing, because the people that are emailing are emailing Dr. Bradley, they're emailing, you were included on the email that I got, so. But it's the ones who aren't emailing, who don't know what's happening, all they're seeing is, or all they're hearing is from their kids, I didn't get hurt at recess today, or I didn't get beat up, and they're getting this email or the communication from Dr. Bradley. There's a lot of gray area there where parents don't know. So, if we're not willing to, you know, sit up here and say, this is what's happening, and be honest, and say, we're working on it, we're taking, you know, the appropriate precautions and appropriate steps, then I think we're doing a disservice by not being communicative to the parents out there who, maybe they don't know that they can call Dr. Bradley, maybe they don't know that they can call Dr. Hoffman, or whoever it might be, so.
That's where your leadership as a board member, sharing with them, this is how you approach your problem, which is going to the teacher, going to the principal.
But those are the people who aren't emailing us, but they're hearing these things, they don't know where to go. So, by saying it here tonight, and by saying it at other meetings, and just giving updates every once in a while, I think that's a good way of getting information out there so that more people can have a chance to hear it.
Yeah, you can never, probably over-communicate is probably not something that you can do. So, that's a good point, that sometimes you just need to keep reminding people about what the process is. So, I appreciate that perspective.
And Brian and Dr. Harner, as somebody who has attended many other school districts meetings recently, this is a problem that's not unique to Quakertown right now. It's happening in almost every district I've seen, and it's.
Yeah, which is why.
It's in elementary schools, it's in middle schools, it's everywhere.
It's because we are robbing our children of social learning by cutting half their face off, which I think is.
Well, I'm not going to go, masks or COVID are one thing, I think it's more.
It's not just one thing, but it's certainly.
So, I'm not going to minimize it by just saying it's masks or COVID. That's not fair.
Well, with that lead in, I can move on to what I want to discuss tonight. Tonight, I'd like to discuss a future, since it's not on the agenda, I'm not exactly sure what happened there, it was on the agenda and now it's not. But I'd like to discuss a future amendment to our health and safety plan. I actually printed out copies of what I wanted to change, because I couldn't email all of the new board members. I didn't hand them out, I will do it in the future, but I just want to have this discussion, get it all in your head now, and let you digest it for a little bit. So, a future amendment to our health and safety plan to adopt the quarantine model from Central Bucks School District and add clarifying language to other aspects of our plan. I'll outline these changes now and submit a copy of the amended plan to you via email once it's set up. The three main changes are to modify the quarantine isolation model to match Central Bucks, which includes not segregating children at lunches and in classrooms. Two is to remove building-wide notifications. Keep the web portal, because that would still allow parents to know, and keep the classroom and close-contact email notifications. But as any parent knows, if you have kids in multiple schools, the crazy amount of emails you get from these health and safety things is almost overwhelming. So, I don't believe the building-wide email notifications are helpful at all. In fact, I think they may be harming some. And then, the third thing I wanted to change was add language that assistance will be provided to aid parents with students with IEPs and 504s in obtaining mask exemptions. Those are the three basic changes. If you look at this email when I send it to you, it's very wordy, there's lots of, you know, ways that that's in there, but essentially, those are the three things I would like to see changed. And the reason I believe we need to make, sorry, I wrote a script out, because I don't want to forget anything. The reason I believe that we need to make these changes is that our students are being held out of schools with little-to-no virtual options to keep caught up. The model I believe we should use is Central Bucks. Theirs has been in place since the start of the school year, and they consistently have lower per capita community case counts than we do, with our longer out-of-school quarantines and isolations. This does not create increased risk, as shown by the county's data. Pen Ridge, Council Rock, and Central Bucks all have similar models in place, and they have approximately 37,000 students combined. With our 4,800 students, it may even help lower the risk, as families may not be as likely to mask symptoms when sending their children to school with fever-reducing medications just to avoid a seven-to-10-day quarantine. I do know some, it's been sort of whispered around, some sports teams, some other activities, that, hey, don't get tested, because if you turn up positive, a whole bunch of us are getting quarantined, so they're not testing, they're masking symptoms, and we could be, because we have such long out-of-school quarantines, we could actually be putting more kids at risk by doing this. Just yesterday, the US District Court for the Eastern District of Pennsylvania gave its opinion on an injunction request for the Central Bucks School District that was filed with a lawsuit alleging that Central Bucks was violating ADA regulations with their health and safety plan. The judge denied the injunction, essentially stating that with the vaccination availabilities extended to all K-12 students, that Central Bucks was meeting its obligation to provide a safe environment. This should add further validity to my argument. Basically, what I'm saying is, what Central Bucks is doing is working, and they're keeping their students out far less than we are. We're quarantining our students for a long period of time and not seeing any better results as a result of that. So, I believe it's important that we look into making this change, because it's going to keep our kids in school, and it's going to make for a better education for everyone. Now, this isn't on the agenda. I did speak to Mr. Garten before the meeting. If you would like to vote on this now, it's basically, in all previous motions that I made, I just made that little generalization there, and then the administration will work on the language in the health and safety plan. I actually already worked on all the language in the health and safety plan, and I can submit that as well. But if you so wish to vote tonight, we can vote tonight.
If you can vote tonight, if five of you agree to make the agenda amended, and also you have a logical reason for doing so, and why it wasn't included on your earlier notice to the public, and also that you publish the revised agenda tomorrow morning on your website and the like.
What actually was on an earlier agenda and was removed, so that's what part of my confusion was.
I just want to say one thing.
Sir, it's never been on this agenda.
You might have looked at, so, thank you, Chris, I appreciate you looking into options, because for me, it's about, you know, how can we keep kids learning longer, you know, so I appreciate you looking into that data. But I think that our fellow board members, you know, I don't want to spring anybody, spring things like this on our colleagues right now, but I think.
Think they knew they were getting into a COVID question when they signed up to be on the board? Did you not know there was COVID?
Well, there's a lot of specifics behind our health and safety plan that I'd prefer to let folks look about it, deliberate on it, think about it, then make a snap vote without any prep.
Well, my biggest fear is.
Because that's what we.
Like I had mentioned earlier today, my biggest fear is, we're keeping these students out now. This all stemmed from an email I got from a parent who was out multiple, from their child was out multiple weeks due to close contacts in their home. We need to improve on this. You know, we're keeping kids out of school with. You know, we're keeping kids out of school with, with no learning options, little to no learning options at home. You know, it's, it's basically like it was when I went to school. You know, your teacher could put your homework assignments in your friend's backpack to drop it off on your house, at your house on the way home. We're relying on teachers with no, there's no mandate that they send work home for students that are on these at-home quarantines.
Well, that, that's a different topic.
Well, I, I understand that, but because that's happening.
Let's talk about one topic at a time.
Well, no, but because that's happening, we need to move on shortening these quarantines as soon as possible. And we have a model that's been proven to work. They have less per capita case counts than we do, less. And they also have 30-some percent of their students receiving mask exemptions down there. We only have 4%. We would not be putting anyone in any greater risk if we move forward with this, but again, I need people to vote.
You make a compelling case. I just suggest that we introduce it, like you said, you can, now you'll be able to email it to everybody and then we'll be able to talk about it in, in January 6th, our next board meeting, that is.
Yeah, I agree with Ron. I, I mean, I'm sorry, with John, you know, you're talking in very general terms, paraphrasing something I've never seen. So, I mean, I, I would love to at least look at what you have.
Well, that is typically how we would make those motions for changes to health and safety plans. There were three very general things. I say, we adopt Central Bucks' health and safety plan, you know, we, we change those two pieces of language and that's it. Then the administration would make those changes to the health and safety plan. I just went ahead and made the changes, so.
We get it. You said that already.
No, I, I know. I was just explaining to.
No, I'm not, I'm not against it. I just want to, I, I like to see something in front of me before I take a decision.
Yeah, I think it's important that we, we take a look at the language. In principle, Chris, you know, I very well may be, you know, in favor of it, and it's a, you know, common sense revision on the health and safety plan, but I'd love to have a, a look at the wording, be able to vote with a clear conscience that I know what's going on.
The one issue I would ask, and I want to speak to something that Mr. Spear suggested earlier, his comment rightly or wrongly was that the health and safety plan was on a previous agenda. Dr. Harner indicates that that was not the case for this coming agenda. It's fine.
Well, it's supposed to be on all agendas.
But, but, but hang on a second, just a minute, just a minute. Let me finish my point. I want to bring this, the members of the old board, I want to bring you back to when we talked about that. It's my understanding, we said, keep the health and safety plan on the agenda perpetually going forward, so that if we needed to react, we could. Am I incorrect in that belief?
That was my understanding. In fact, that's what I wrote here, that you would, that we had voted to do that, so it would be part of every agenda going forward, and I think we did that back in August.
Okay, so perhaps it was, just assume that this being the reorganization meeting, we wouldn't have anything to debate or to, to vote on, there wasn't any issue. That being said, I would like to know from the current, from the new board now, the thinking of the old board was that we wanted the health and safety plan as a permanent agenda item, not because we expected to have something to talk about at every meeting, but in case a law, a statute, a regulation, the pandemic conditions, the moment anything changed, we needed to have it on the agenda, because current regulations demand, you cannot vote on anything unless it was on the agenda, you can't add it. We're facing that issue in whether or not we wanted to consider Mr. Spear's amendment. So I would like to know from the current board, does anybody disagree with the recommendation from the old board, that that item should be on all agendas going forward until such time as this board sees differently?
Ron, weren't you part of the agenda-setting meeting?
I did not ask. It'd be, it'd be removed, that's all I will tell you on that one.
I think you should stay on there.
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm fine with it being.
Yeah, I think it should stay on.
Outline item on, on the agenda. Further, I would ask, though, that if there's a specific revision or a specific subject that somebody wants to bring up, that we try to get it on the agenda so we can talk intelligently about what we're trying to do.
I had actually sent a copy to Terry and to Joe Cuzzo. Actually, I'm not sure if I sent it to Terry. I, I did send it, I wanted this on the agenda.
I'm not questioning that.
No, no, I, I know. But what, on a normal circumstances, I would have not printed 15 of these 10-page copies out in full color. I would have emailed them to everyone, but we did not have emails set up for all of you, so I couldn't do that this time.
Yeah, and they weren't sworn in yet, so it, it just, it is what it is.
So wouldn't the procedure be, we vote on this, administration writes policy for it, do we review it again before it goes into action? So if, if we don't use that as a guideline, ask the administration to draft the verbiage that they want to use for the recommendations Chris has, and then we have something to vote on at the next meeting and actually save two weeks or a month on making this policy?
Well, yeah, that's, that's kind of the point, if, you know, Chris, tonight can, can start that process with all of you and get something out in front of us, and then we, we'll be able to hit the ground running on January 6th, missing the few weeks in December when kids will be in school, and then they'll be off in between the holidays. So for me, that's what I'd prefer to give you an opportunity to learn about it, read about it, make up your minds, have questions prepared. And even some questions can be answered in email, because it's, it's a subject that the four of us are deeply embedded in, but the five of you aren't.
So I had another question based on something Chris mentioned, and I think it was Mr. Jackson who had asked the administration a couple, maybe two months ago, to have a virtual plan or to plan to have a virtual plan. Am I?
Yeah, but, but my, my recommendation to the administration was for next year.
Right, and that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I did.
So I want to make sure that that is still going forward, too. I want to make sure that we haven't forgot that, or that doesn't slip up off of an agenda item. I, I think that needs to be something that, you know, to Mr. Jackson's point from a couple months ago, we need to be able to address, because if Chris is right, and we're still dealing with this in a couple of, you know, months when the new school year starts, I'd like to have some flexibility that we didn't have this year. You know, I want to be able to say, okay, you came down with COVID, you do have to be quarantined for X amount of days, and here's an option for you to continue doing your work while you're at home, that we just didn't have this year because we had the Q Flex model that we have. So I wanted to reinforce what Mr. Jackson was asking for and make sure that we're still working towards that goal.
I, I think that's, that's important as well, but there's a lot of different facets to, to making that engine run. We need cooperation from the rank and file, the union, to be able to make changes to course planning and infrastructure.
Yeah, that's yet a third topic that I don't, yeah.
So if, if we're, if we're serious about really wanting to have a, you know, a robust virtual model, and, you know, there's a lot, there was a lot of opportunity that, that we had during the COVID, in, in my opinion. We should have, you know, try to get together a, a committee or work with the administration, identify what all the, the, the gotchas are to, to executing that. And, and then, you know, take it to the administration and the board and the union and see what we need to do to make it happen, because I, I'm a real proponent of, of a, and a more effective virtual environment. I still think that it's not as good as being in person, no matter what, but I believe that it can be much improved.
Yeah, I don't care about the process, you know, whatever process is most effective and, and works, I'm, I'm fine with, but I, I do want to make sure that we're at least exploring how to do that. So if, you know, your committee idea.
So if you want, you can bring that up to the education committee and talk about it.
And Dr. Harner, is, is the email distribution list up, so we can email the board at board?
Everybody's on it now.
And then who, who is on that completely, just so the new board members know?
That's a great, great comment. Thank you, Chris. The, on, on our board emails, we have the cabinets on there, and, and Terry is the board secretary, and myself are on the board emails along with your nine email addresses, so you know that that's, that's out there. That's been our.
And the cabinet, they won't know what the cabinet means.
The cabinet, the folks at the table right here, plus Joe Cuzzo, I guess he's still right here. So it's Joe, Dawn, Nancy, Lisa, myself, and then also, excuse me, and also Janet. That's the cabinet. They're the people I meet with on a weekly basis. We, we're the ones who collaboratively come up with what we present to the board. Now, one of the things, Mike, you talked about, if I may, about process. If one board member has an idea, it's great, I would love to have it shared out with everybody and all that kind of stuff. It gives us time to think about what our thoughts are on everything, and I, I hope that the, you would respect that the administration would have input into it. But making sure if there's only one person interested in it, and we go out and we start spinning our wheels to do because one person wants something.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want you to do that.
Thank you. It, it has taken them off of their daily job.
Correct, right. You have day jobs.
And so, so the idea is, is to through committee process, the committees give us guidance of what they want to see brought to the board or back to the committee and those kind of things, not individually saying, I want to see this at the next board meeting. That's not, you just can't do that.
Well, health and safety doesn't have a committee.
Yeah, that's different. We're, we allow, that's why I suggest you.
Yeah, but that's, my point is, you know, my point was only on, on what Mr. Post had, had suggested about, you know, you know, giving us your, your work and then start working really hard. Well, if there's five other people that don't want to do that, why are we spinning our wheels on that?
Well, the problem is, we can't vote by email to, to see if there's five people that approve of something, you know, to get it onto the agenda. That's, that herein lies the problem. You know what I mean? So.
You can work through me. You can, if there's something that really.
And, and these, these types of changes, you know, health and safety changes are not ones that can typically wait two months to go through a committee and then another thing. These.
And we're not talking about doing that, Chris, so we don't need to belabor that point. Are there any other comments from other board members?
Just one, one quick comment, this was really small. The comment was made regarding who was on the school board email. I want to make sure that the new board members understand, this question was raised because when a parent or anybody in the community wishes to email the school board, they'll click a button that says, email the school board. The school board is the nine of us plus Dr. Harner, and the assumption being, those are the individuals who are going to get that email. Well, that's incorrect. There's additional individuals who are getting that email. Not that it's, you know, wrong or right or whatever, it's just a matter of perception. Should we change the wording of the word "school board"? Or should we change the email to something else? Because again, it's an assumption by the parent, well, these are the individuals I emailed, that's who got it. And in fact, other individuals are getting the email. And I don't think it matters to many people here if additional people get the email. Question is whether or not it's unclear to the parents.
Or we can just make sure on the website, it describes what board@QCSD is, that's all. Because it's not unusual to have a mailing list that has a name and, you know, it's, they don't know who it's going to, but.
And originally, during my eight years here, it started out just with myself, and then I would constantly be sending it, individual emails out to staff, then I added on the assistant, one assistant superintendent when I picked up, a second assistant superintendent, then she was on it, then we hit, went into COVID. And when we're all working from home for months and to minimize the, the time lags, I can't walk down the hallway to see the person to talk about a board member's email. That's how it, it grew. And it has been a helpful process, because we collaboratively come in, you, Mr. Jackson has a comment, then we all, we all see that comment, and if he has an opinion about something or Mr. Spear, any, any board member, and, and we, we talk about it, you know, and we have our own opinion, then we took, work through the board leadership and doing whatever we have to do.
Yeah, it seemed like an effective list. But to Mr. Jackson's point, if we change the website, we can make sure it indicates exactly who, who it's going to in addition to the board members.
I have one more thing for new business.
Okay.
One issue I think we should consider, maybe solutions for, is the drop-off process that we have at schools, seeing a long, lot of potential safety issues, long lines, taking up police resources to sit at certain elementary schools to make sure traffic's not blocking roads. So if we could look into a solution for that, I don't know what that solution is. I usually like to come with solutions with my problems.
Get some friends to apply for bus driver positions.
Well, and that's, and that's some of the problem, right? I mean, we, you know, we have, we have an influx of people now, you know, three busfuls at least in the district, depending on how the transportation coordinator, Becky Ott, it, it, Brooke, excuse me, Brooke Ott, is selecting, and I don't think she's selecting, I think Levy's selecting and telling Brooke who's, what bus is going to be pulled from the route. But, you know, you have an increased number of people that are being dropped off at schools, maybe not to last year's numbers, but still causing a lot of issues at schools. So whether we can, you know, potentially open schools earlier, I, I don't know the, the logistics of that or contracts with that, but we need some type of solution.
Are we staggering buses, so, so we don't necessarily have three buses from Poff that are all needing parent drop-offs, and we have one from Poff, one from Richland, and one from Nighting?
There is some logic to the selection of the routes that aren't being done and it's not all tagging on one school. There are also, you probably personally know of the Strayer-Richland Elementary School. I mean, it's, it's a one-way street, it's a dead end, and, and that's problematic, and it's a, and, and I know that we, there've been some discuss, not discussion, decisions not to, to have too many at, at Strayer because of the complications of that, of the long lines of extra cars that come in, because we don't have the drivers. Also, for the, for the good of the community who's ever listening, and for the board, you know, we talked about, or Levy's sent us information, I send the information out to the old board, the previous board, that, that they have, they've been recruiting, they're in training, and it takes them a while to get a CDL. You just can't come in and drive a bus, you got to go through all kinds of training. And they, they, they promised a lot, and sadly, some people had pulled out of the training. So it's, the, the crisis is not over. They have, we have not gotten any discussions with them about salaries or their contract, unlike what you see in the article that Gary wrote for the, for us, summarizing what we've done for our own internal staff. Though I don't see the bus problem fixing itself or having it fixed in a, in a shorter period of time.
So what, what do you?
Dr. Harner, just building upon Todd's comment here, is there any possibility to open schools early, to allow the, the drop-offs to go a little smoother, instead of having?
Spread it out?
Yeah, spread it out.
The, the schools, is it possible? Yes, we'll, we'll look at it. We'll look at that. But what, what we do and what we did, decided the board approved last spring or last fall or August about our later start time. And we have the teachers coming in, they're in professional development before the school day starts, before the school students arrive, and there are anywhere from 20 minutes to 25 minutes of time that the teachers are just there with the administration and their peers. If, if we allow students into the building, then that becomes problematic. Now, maybe we have, and we're short a third of our aides still, and we just sent out, we just got the MOU approved with our, our, our support staff union, and we're just, advertisement went out two days ago, Barb?
Yeah.
Two days ago, for this new increased compensation that the board approved. So we'll look at it, we'll give you that, and, and I'll report back in an email to the board what we're finding, because it's going to be four weeks before we have a meeting.
Yeah, because it could be something as simple as, just like at the end of the day, some people pile into the gym underneath numbered things for their buses, it could be the same in the morning. They pile into a gym, sit there and wait till the school opens, right? Something like that.
Yes, sir. But I'm not sure, I, I'm, today, I'm not sure that we have the staff to do that.
Right, I understand.
And that's why I have to come back at you and, and report out.
Yeah, but maybe parents will volunteer, somebody I'm sure, anyway, it'd be interesting.
Thank you very much for the, for the conversation.
Some creative.
Harner, did, I know at one point Levy still hadn't signed their contract, have they since signed their? Harner, did, I know at one point Levy still hadn't signed their contract. Have they since signed their contract?
Janet, do we know? We, we're in agreement, but we.
Been in agreement since August, though.
Not really, sir. We still had the, some of the students with disability, transportation things that were, we wrestled through till middle of August.
Or middle of September, actually.
Okay.
But when we presented them with a contract, they said, yeah, we can do that. Sure. Give us the contract. And then they, they started to nitpick. And I don't know if it was September or October.
It was, but there was other things going on also that we were working on and.
So basically, the answer is no, they have not signed the contract yet. Are we anticipating that to happen soon?
I hope this to happen at the January board meeting.
Finally. Thank you.
The other thing, I think this has been a nagging problem. I know we're not alone. But I would sure like to see a written timeline from Levy on what their plans are to get past the staffing shortage. And if they have to be creative, like we've been creative in, in raising salaries, we've, we spent an extra
$600,000 to, to, to make our staff happy. They should, they should do the same thing. Because ultimately, our
customers are, are being inconvenienced, you know, on a regular basis. And, and I think that they should be sensitive to it. I want to put them on record.
I think it's a great finance.
There you go. Any other comments under the board comments?
I was, I was on the speaker then. I said, it's a great finance, I didn't have this on, great finance committee topic.
And I know the agenda, John, is moving on to the SRO. But I actually read the SRO before coming to the board meeting tonight. And I was just a little taken back by a number of incidents at the high school level. And I know, I was just curious, you know, knowing there was discussion earlier about the COVID factor. Is there anything else that we can do to help the community, help the children, help the schools? Because obviously, you don't want, you know, violence to occur. We want children to feel safe going to school. And, you know, I know you're, you have this system in place, but is it swift and effective enough? There's been mention in some articles about parents coming to the school and helping out to help steer the community in the right direction, give guidance to have more of a adult presence to support the schools voluntarily. And I didn't know if that was an option we could explore or what else we could explore to help reduce the tensions occurring at the school level.
There, there are so many different activities that at each building level, each building is going on to work on those things. I was trying to save you all. What was on the agenda initially was Nancy was going to give you a superintendent's goals and a strategic comprehensive plan broad overview. All of that's in there. And year one has so many things, which is this year, so many things for mental health and issues that are addressing what's manifesting itself because we knew it was coming, most of it. But you're right. For the, for the board members, there was a community summary that's in the public comment section. And then in the executive section, there's another more detailed report. Is that what you're talking about?
No, just in reference to the SRO.
Yeah, yeah, their report, there were two reports. One that's in the public folder.
Only in the public folder.
And that, but there's one in the executive folder there for you to get into the weeds of the specificity that we don't share out there because it's not public knowledge.
I would make a mention to, this list is much shorter than it's been in the past, even.
Not that that makes you feel better. Mr. V, do you want to say anything about this topic?
Please, Matt.
Matt?
Not to call you on the mat or anything, but, you know, you're sitting there quiet and stuff.
Not to call you on the mat, Matt.
I can't say too much publicly, as, as Dr. Harner mentioned. But I will mention, though, that the term incident sounds more severe than maybe it is. I believe the correct term would be inquiry. Because every time our SRO is involved in any correspondence, that would be communicated as an inquiry, as a, as an incident in the report. And so a little fender bender in the parking lot would be considered an incident. A, anytime a parent meets with an SRO would be considered an incident. So each one of those is considered a line item on the report. And so though the number 21 this month appears to be large, I think when you look at the detailed report, you will find that the number of serious incident be a lot lower than it appears.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you for those comments. And we did just touch on information items. There's a SRO report you can read. And move on to the other information for dates for the board member calendars, which we'll start receiving at some point in our email business.
I think we have public comment. Okay, excuse me. I thought that was before.
Thank you. And we can move on to general public comments. I think we have a couple of requests.
Oh, Mr. President, now that I can refer to you as that.
Yes.
Do we want to possibly up the time? We were at a two minute timer before, and it seems.
Oh, I'm going for three. We can at least increase that by 50%.
Yeah, that's, I would agree. I would agree. I would say the minimum three minutes.
Were we at two minutes? No, I think we were at three, weren't we?
We were.
We were three.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I'm not, I think we, we limited it when we'd be like 20 or 30 people, just so people didn't say the same thing. I'd even thought about moving the, the thingy in front of us, but we can keep it there, I guess. What's that? Yeah. OSHA. Yeah. So, yeah, I'm cool with, we're not going to be beasts about it if you're polite. So you can do the three minute thing. And if you need more, we'll give you more.
Okay, David O'Donnell?
And David's always polite.
That's what my wife will tell you. David O'Donnell, Richland Township. I'm not going to take three minutes. You don't need a timer. This one's going to be relatively short. Welcome to all the new board members. Congrats for getting here. I also saw the SRO report in the public file, and it was a little alarming to see that. I did read the disclaimer at the bottom saying that not all of them are serious incidents. I would ask the board to, you know, ask the administration to consider maybe breaking out serious incidents in a report like that in the future to reduce panic. That's, you know, I see those numbers and I'm like, whoa, that's a lot. But, you know, when you, when, like they said, when you dig into the real report that we, that the public's not able to see, it's probably not as bad as it, as it sounded. So that's, that's a positive thing to hear coming here. The other thing that I really hope that the board will consider addressing with the administration is the graduate requirement of the Keystone exams. It's big, big disruption to a lot of families with delays for school starts, a lot of disruption for students. There's no longer a legal requirement for them, but we still have them as a graduation requirement. So something that I would ask the new board to look into and potentially address with the administration to potentially get rid of that graduation requirement for the Keystone exams. That's really all I got.
Thank you.
I like, I like your idea about the data. Yeah, report, report it more meaningfully so we don't panic.
And I like your idea about less standardized testing. Because I believe that that does disrupt from the kid's education. Sure, we can use it for evaluation processes, but how many do we have and how many do we need is probably something we should really consider.
Grateful for the comment. We, but most of the things we do are federally mandated and intern state mandated. I'd like Dr. Hoffman to talk briefly about, since we have a little bit of time here. And he didn't take up, he has 54 seconds left, that Dr. Hoffman answer a couple of those questions.
I yield my time to the good.
To set the stage because it's about the new program of studies that the board has already looked at.
Well, you just took 10 of those seconds.
Sure, thank you. So, you know, I know that, that we have received a number of inquiries from parents about the Keystone exams and different things that they've heard about whether or not they're still required. It's important to note that there's two differences here. There's the requirement in terms of the federal mandate, which is that we present the students with the test and that they sit for the test. We do get federal funds, so we need to continue to provide that opportunity to students. In terms of the graduation requirement, we do still hold our own graduation requirement here, that is, students must pass Keystone exam or do a separate assessment. Right now, that separate assessment is Study Island. We also have a variety of things that were approved, I think, last in 2017 for students who have special education replacement classes. They have a different set of standards. Our EL students who just arrived in the country have a different set of standards. So we really have tried to make it accessible to as many students as possible. But we do have a new state initiative coming out, Act 158, which is a new set of requirements for students for graduation. And Mr. V and myself and Dr. Zackin have been working on all of those new pathways for students. And that will be coming to the board for approval in January or February, depending on, I think the, our meeting's January 27th. So we won't probably have another meeting in January for you to vote for it. But if you'd like more information on what Keystone's are, you're welcome to come to the January 27th Education Committee meeting where that's on the agenda so that you can learn a little bit more about what the state is requiring of our students and what I will be recommending that the district adopt in terms of Keystone as a graduation requirement.
But then I guess that was the point of the, the parents, not just Dave's comment, but that the state's not requiring it, but we are. And, you know, us as a body and you as an administrator could make that decision to not have it as part of our graduation.
But, but the comment was also that we had to have them sit for the test and take it.
For that test?
For federal funding.
But the federal funding mandates that we take Keystone tests? That's a Pennsylvania state test.
Right. That's what we, that's what Pennsylvania has adopted to meet the federal rules. So each state, each state chooses how they're going to meet that, that law.
For that funding.
So for Pennsylvania, they have elected the PSSA and, and, you know, grades three through eight, and then the three Keystone exams. And so those are the, the tests that we must administer to our students as a public school in Pennsylvania. Students will take those tests regardless of whether or not it's a graduation requirement for them to pass it. So even if we were to say today, which I don't recommend, they don't need this to pass, they're still going to sit and take the test unless they have an exemption from that test.
So if you, if you want to get them to completely take that out altogether, then that's another one for the finance committee to determine how they're going to handle well so those funds.
And, and maybe, maybe not even just that test. Maybe there's some others. I mean, I, I, I hear it from, and it's not, this isn't a knock on you or us or the administration, but I hear it from many parents, and not only parents, teachers.
Sure.
You know, a lot of teachers are saying we have too much standardized testing that we have to work our curriculums around that, you know, is taking away from time that we could be teaching them, you know, their subjects.
Understood. And, and we have tried to limit the amount of testing that we've done. We've removed a number of assessments. But, you know, benchmark assessment data is, is critical to see how students are doing towards the standards. So to some extent, we do have to leave some of that in there. But as I said, we'll be discussing Act 158 in January and, and what the state's going to be requiring us, requiring of us. So please come out and join our, our new education committee.
Absolutely.
Maybe we'll have snacks.
Dr. Hoffman, does the, the financial mandate, does that mean the students have to pass the, the test? Or do they just have to sit for it once, give it a try? And, you know, they sat, they didn't do well, but they sat. And then that meets that.
So in very general terms, they would sit for the test a minimum of one time in order to meet our accountability portion of the standards. Now, we also have our sort of report card for ourselves, if you will, which lets us know how many students pass the exam. So of course, we would want students to try multiple times to see if they can pass it.
Are they required to try it multiple times?
We are required to offer the test to every student who hasn't passed at every window. So it's offered three times a year. We're required to have them sit three times a year. There are some students who don't sit for the Keystone at all because either they're exempt or, as I mentioned, some of the other qualifiers that allow them not to sit for it. And that does count against our score. But we have, they have the option to do that. And we do have a number of students who, after they've tried it one or two times, the parents will call me and say, please make sure my child doesn't sit in front of this test again. And so we make that accommodation. But the state's requirement of accountability measure, like that we give it, is separate from now the state's requirement of Act 158, which is they have to pass this or pathway two, pathway three, pathway four, pathway five, I think they're up to right now, five different pathways.
And that could include like NOCTI tests at tech schools that could take the place of.
Correct. That's what we're going to talk about in January at the Ed Committee meeting, what, what we're representing as our options for students.
So this just belies kind of what I was pointing out earlier in my, my little speech, that things behind the scenes are often not so clear. And this is where we take money and people expect things in behalf of that money. So when the state or the federal government gives us money, we have to do their bidding. Maybe there's ways to not take their money and then we can have our own say. But that's part of the tangled web that we've woven.
And a little bit of history on, just a history on Keystone's. The board in 2014, when they put out the, voted out the standards based grading at the middle school, high school back in 2014, they also approved graduation requirements which required the passing of the Keystone exam. As you, I'm very proud of our district. If you walk in the front door of the high school, and Mr. V, as he does every day, you see up there about America's Best High Schools. If, if our Keystone exams go down and we don't meet the state, state average, or best the state average, that's the very first step in becoming a designated America's Best High School. As I had an appointment or three Toll Brothers, people came to, got on Zoom meeting with Rob and I last week, talking about our community land or in our community that's, they'd like to develop. They sold 60 houses in last year, Chris, to your point, maybe a couple of months ago, 60 houses in less than a year. And I said, why is that? And he says, it's because of your schools. And I know you go down here on Broad Street, you see the sign saying, you know, Quaker Town High Achieving Schools. As you lower your standards for what we expect students to graduate with, for every action, there's going to be a reaction. If kids do not know that they have to pass the test and they just either opt, you know, they opt out mentally, they sit there, which a lot do in tests. They, they sit and they just don't, they go AAA or ABCD, ABCD, whatever, then that's going to reflect on this community, especially in the Keystone. Not PSSAs, but the Keystone, because that's the first step. And it's those high school scores, your SAT scores, your AP scores, and your Keystone scores are all part about of a quality community. So it's nice to, and say, you know, I know parents, you don't want to have the pressure, but it's also about our reputation as a community. So that's what the, if, if you get to the education committee, the, all nine of you have got to come back and tell us, you know, that you want to do, lead us in a different direction or keep the direction and all that. So I think that's important to know.
Next is Candace Titus.
Hello. I sent an email a little over a week ago to all of the administration, the board, the heads of special education and pupil services. And I feel so strongly about it that I would like to read that email to you tonight since it is half of a new board. So I'm going to read that email. And then I have a little bit at the end that I'm adding on. Dr. Harner, administration and board members, I'm writing today to discuss QS, QCSD's unfair grading policies for students with disabilities. My son is in fourth grade at Trumbauer'sville. He has multiple diagnoses of autism, intellectual disability, apraxia of speech, a mixed receptive and expressive language disorder. He was completely nonverbal for the first six years of his life. We are so blessed that he has begun to use his vocal speech. But he does still rely heavily on his AAC device for communication and is not yet conversational. For his K through three schooling, he was a part of the IU autistic support program that was housed at Trumbauer's. that was housed at Trumbowersville. At the end of last year, when we found out that the program was moving to Nidegg, we worked with Kerry Stifiri and decided to transition him to the Life Skills Program so that he could remain at Trumbowersville. A few weeks ago, I received his first-ever progress report from this school district. I do have other children in the district, so I've seen these before. This was his first. We did not receive these when he was a part of the IU program. The IU program based his progress on his IEP goals. This progress report was a punch to the gut and I's as far as the eye could see. For those of you unfamiliar with our elementary grading procedures, N is needs improvement, P is proficient, meaning when his report card comes home next week, it's going to be a whole bunch of ones. I was extremely confused by this progress report because his teacher consistently raves about how well he is doing, how much progress he is making, and admiring how well he has adjusted to the change in his programming. When I reached out to his teacher to question, I was told that this is the Quaker Town grading policy. Excuse me, I'm so sorry. The Quaker Town grading policy requires that he be held to fourth-grade standards." I'm so sorry.
You're doing okay, Candace.
That he be held to fourth-grade, fourth-grade standards for his report card. He is not being taught a fourth-grade curriculum. He receives replacement instruction. So, he is being graded on a curriculum that he is not receiving instruction for. My son just started talking three years ago. His reading and math instruction is a completely different curriculum, several grade levels behind his typical peers. He is included with his typical peers for science and social studies, but his work is significantly modified. Yet, for his report card, he is being held to fourth-grade standards. This makes absolutely no sense to me. I feel it is completely unfair because he should be graded on the instruction that he is receiving. So, I then reached out to Kerry Stifiri. As you know, as the supervisor of special education, we had a wonderful conversation. She understood my concerns, but she did explain that this is Quaker Town's policy. She also stated that she understands that there's definitely room for improvement. She said that she would reach out to the Office of Teaching and Learning, who is responsible for reporting policies and educational records. And while I appreciated her response and I do trust that she will follow through, I felt the need to reach out to the board and the administration to continue to advocate against this unfair policy, or should I say, lack of policy, because I searched and I cannot find one. There is no policy specific to students receiving replacement instruction and grade reporting. The closest thing I found was as follows. Policy 212 states various methods of reporting appropriate to grade level and curriculum shall be utilized. So, I question, why is there not an alternate grading method based on the curriculum that he is receiving? Policy 102 states that students with disabilities may attain academic standards by completion of their individualized education programs in accordance with law and regulations and board policy. So, again, I question, why is there no board policy in accordance with law, specific to grading students with disabilities who are receiving replacement instruction? So, I ask that you please, as a board member and administration, investigate developing a fair grading policy for students receiving replacement instruction. I am not expecting to see a report card with all Ps or all fours if he is not making progress towards his IEP goals. I want him to be graded fairly. Fairly would be him being graded on the instruction that he is actually receiving. Not only my son, but all students with disabilities receiving replacement instruction in our school district deserve your immediate attention to this extremely unfair practice that has gone on for far too long. Our special education programs have made progress, but there is still so much work to do, and it can start here. Just because this is the way it has always been done does not mean it is right. That was my email, and I just want to add one little bit. I appreciate your time. I have reached out since sending this email to several parents in my circle. Every parent I have spoken to has said that their child, their child's teacher always calls or emails first or sends a letter out with their report card explaining something along the lines of that while this is Quaker Town's policy, this report card is not a true reflection of your child's progress. And so, please look to the IEP progress report for a more accurate picture. So, I must question, if special education teachers disagree with this process, and I'm sure many regular education teachers would as well, why hasn't anyone stopped to question, how can we do better? Please develop an alternate grading policy for students receiving replacement instruction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question of the administration regarding the parents' response? Ms. Pallone, Dr. Hoffman, whoever wishes. Is her summation of the grading policy for special needs children accurate?
While, while Mrs. Pallone's coming up, just so that everyone's aware, once we received this request, we did add it to the agenda for the January 27th Education Committee so that we could show you exactly what the policy says and what our practice has been so we can have a further discussion about at that point, but.
Thank you.
I don't want to speak specifically to any student with violating their FERPA. I think there might be.
Parents right here, you can ask her if she could talk about her own child.
Record it as well.
I appreciate that, but she's right here. Okay. Then the other question I would have is, with the presentation you're going to present us in January, if that's the intent, I would really like to hear how the policy, if you're, believe it's proper, is treating this student fairly when according to the teacher, and again, I'm not clear as to the parents and everything here. It seems clear that the curriculum she's given is lower than the grade they're in, and it seems quite unfair to me. So, I would love to be able to have a presentation that shows, not only is this the policy that we have, but this is why it's fair. Or if the change is coming, how it addresses this kind of a concern.
Sure.
And then to that, as part of the Policy Committee, I would like to find out what, how it relates to the IU grading policy and whether the difference is there. I want to understand that because Ms. Titus mentioned what it was like for a student, for her son in the IU and then what it's like for us here. And then if it's possible, if there's any way we can find out what policies cover this because I'm familiar with the two that she mentioned, but if there are any others. And then whether or not any of the, any local other school districts might have something similar to that or a policy that covers that.
The IU policies are public as well. We can.
So, that way, if there is something that, you know, we learn in the Education Committee that maybe we can create a policy specific to our needs. So, that way, we can address this if it needs to be addressed.
Mr. Ramirez, to your point, that is part of our information gathering that we're doing at this point in time.
Oh, thank you.
Jason Gerhart.
Jason Gerhart, Quaker Town Borough. I was a recent school board candidate and 2020, 2021 elementary redistricting co-chair midstream. So, I just want to take an opportunity, I know we have a lot of new faces, two colleagues from the redistricting committee on the board and myself and another one ran in, you know, for, for the school board. But I just wanted to take a moment to thank the previous Board of Directors, the District and Building Administration, the nurses, the counselors, the teachers, staff, parents and students who are stepping up when needed most, handling something no other group before ever had to do in the history of Quaker Town's Community School District, making tough critical decisions when other school districts didn't know how to and authorities frowned upon it, and keeping our kids in school as much as possible, which we continue to do each and every meeting. Without the above-mentioned group and the elementary redistricting committee and individual personal and community recommendations, I would not be standing here today. This last year, as part of the redistricting committee and learning along the election process, really opened my eyes of all the behind-the-scenes an average person doesn't see. So, when I was a student, kind of going through 12th grade here in the district, I had a different perspective. When I became a homeowner 12 years ago and a taxpayer, I had a different perspective. I've been a district resident for 35 years, a community volunteer for 24, totally different perspective, and each day I have a much more appreciation for all levels of the, the school district. And, and I just want to also thank all the candidates. There was 12 of us trying to go for six, six positions, and I appreciate, this is not a time that anybody really wants to step up, but these 12 individuals were amazing. And I met so many people along the way and had great conversations. And I just, if you have a need in the ear, I'm here, I'm not going away. Like I said, I've been a 24-year community volunteer, and I'm looking for new, new things to get involved in, and I think the schools is it. So, you, you need something, I'm here.
Can you drive a bus?
I hope it goes, I hope it goes both ways. So, you might be hearing from me the next two years. I have a whole list of things I was hoping to, of concerns and conversations that people worked on, just because I'm not one of nine. I'm still going to be working on this list as a community voice and a community ear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gerhart.
Karen Majewski.
Karen Majewski, Milford. So, I had something prepared to read tonight, but it's pretty apparent after watching this meeting that it's not going to matter. So, you know, I've been to last like five, six or board meetings and, you know, they've all been pretty tough to watch, you know, a lot's been going on. And I have to say, unfortunately, this board meeting has been the most cringe-worthy one to watch and sit through and listen to. And I just want everybody to know who's, all the people that are watching this, people that are listening, that everyone understands exactly what's happening here, you know, with John Kern basically being Dr. Harner's puppet at this point. And I think that it's disappointing for a lot of people watching, some of the new members, very quiet tonight. I hope, I really hope that that changes. I hope, I think that these people got elected in hopes that past members that were quiet and not speaking up, that that was going to change. And I think it's really disappointing in this meeting. I think there was a lot of things that happened, you know, Mr. Spears talking about the health and safety plan and it didn't even, I don't even understand why, you know, he had said, hey, five members, why don't you guys say something? And it just got shot down. I don't, nobody even spoke. Nobody even tried to talk on it other than Mr. Kern. There was one, but it's not looking good. I gotta tell you, a lot of people watch this and it's not looking good, and I think it's disappointing and cringe-worthy and, yeah, everyone can see it. It's very obvious, so.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak? Last minute ad hoc, off the cuff.
We can call you by name, Joe Lyons. You're the only one left in the audience that haven't spoke.
Okay, then I make a motion. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Jackson.